Welcome everyone to City Council meeting. We should have started at 4:30 I guess on another meeting, so I apologize. But we are here and we are going now. Thank you for those that have come for this meeting, for being patient. Welcome, members of the city or other communities, welcome staff, welcome council. Let's do a roll call and make sure that we can conduct City Council business tonight.
Beacom present.
Summerhaze present.
Hayman present.
Hurst present.
Plummer present.
All five council members present. Thank you for being here. Let's start with the legislative prayer thought from Councilmember Shailene Hayman.
All right. I thought long and hard about what to say today. We have a lot happening in our world, in our nation, in our state. And I decided with all of that going on, I was gonna sidestep all of that heavy stuff and start out with a pop quiz. Pop quiz. What is the one type of cancer that kills the most Utahns? Anybody? Most cancer that kills the most Utahns?
Lung.
Lung?
Skin.
Skin?
Colon.
Colon?
Leukemia.
Leukemia is good. I think all of those are great answers. I would have thought melanoma, given the state that we live in and how much sun we have. Correct answer is right from here. Lung cancer. Did you know?
Are we dating your doctor?
Did you know that Utah has the lowest rate of smokers? That we die the most from lung cancer? Anyone know why?
Radon.
Secondhand smoke.
Radon. Yeah, you would think, I love this little group back here, you would think maybe it's the bad air quality that we have here. No, it's radon. Radon is a naturally occurring gas that comes up from out of our ground, mostly because we have a lot of granite here. It's odorless, tasteless. You have no idea that this stuff is here. And yet, it can kill you. The EPA says that you should have in your home less than four pico liters. Four pico liters or less in order to be safe. If you have 10 pico liters coming through your house, that's the equivalent of everybody in your home that is inhaling that radon of smoking one pack of cigarettes per day, according to the EPA. 10 pico liters. Okay, Jennifer, would you like to put up the graph that I obtained from the Utah State Department of Environmental Quality with regard to radon? Guess what is the city in Davis County that has the highest average radon?
Great.
Congratulations. That's Centerville. On average, and this is from 2019 data, on average, our homes have that are tested. We have 544 homes tested. My home is in that number. 7.6% is the average. Close to smoking three quarters of a pack of cigarettes per day. Crazy, right? So when you look at these statistics, we have 42% of our homes in Centerville that fall under that four pico liter EPA standard. And we have 60, almost 60%, almost 6 in 10 of our homes have more radon than it should, according to this test. It is super easy to test for radon. You can go, there's, whoo, I actually have the statistics here. You can go to Utah Radon Services. They offer free tests. The state provides tests for about $11 each. You can just go to Home Depot and buy one of these things. I bought a radon detector off of Amazon. Amazon sells you anything. Right? Super easy to test. You send it off. If your home is too high, cost between about $1,800 and $2,200 to install it. It's really interesting. And I'll tell you what they did in my house, because I tested, we tested over this limit. I think we were somewhere in the six range. They go in and they install these pipes. And what they do is they install the pipes and it goes down under the subsurface slab of your basement. And then they install it all the way up and they pipe it out your house and it like essentially sucks that radon gas and puts it outside of your house.
So does it go under the floor of your basement?
So if a pipe goes down under the slab of your basement.
It sits in the gravel. They have, radon follows the path. So if you have heat registers in your basement floors, you have a bigger chance of having that issue. But if you put the, the detection goes into the, like, we had a hole drilled in our floor. And it sits in the gravel and it'll, that, it's just got a little pump and a fan and it just pulls it out of your basement.
So I have this weird pipe that runs up in one of my basement closets. But you can test, you can always see if it's still working. And it really was not that disruptive. And they put it in.
They're super quiet.
And you know what? We would have never known, had we not tested, we would have never known. If you look at this, the maximum number in Centerville was 101. Somebody had a test in Centerville. It was 101. That was the equivalent of smoking 10 packs of cigarettes a day. So anyway, congratulations. With all the crap that's going on in the world, I'd like to now scare the crap out of you about radon. But if you haven't tested, I would really encourage you to do it. And talk to people about this because, I mean, I, I'm with you Haley, I would have guessed melanoma, right? Like, we're all out in the sun, we get skin cancer. But, I mean, in, in all the places, Utah lung cancer, number one killer. And it's because of this radon. It's not something that we can, we can, we can stop it, but we can remediate it. So.
Councilor Ham, can I add to your thought?
Yes, please.
I think it's a great thought, because today I am attending emergency management with FEMA. Believe it or not, radon came up as we're talking about the science of disaster. So we're going through and talking about how different disasters occur. And we talked about radon and how it actually works. And I don't want to, the doctor could correct me on this. But essentially, radon steals your electrons from your body. And that's how it gets you, right? Is it borrowing your electrons? And that's how. So we talked about this radon, and particularly here in the state. There's actually a test I just sent Jennifer. You can do yourself to see how much radiation exposure that you experience. So if you fill out this test of how much you travel a year, if you have granite countertops in your home, if you work in a concrete industry, all of that, you could fill out this test and it'll tell you generally how much ra- radiation you're exposed to on a daily basis or an annual basis. So just add that radon is a big deal. So granite countertops in your home is, is a problem. So all the concrete in this city hall right here potentially is a problem, right? So it's really fascinating to, so we're talking about that in the science of disaster class.
So I, I just, I mean, I think that it's one of these things that again, you, you would never know. You would buy your home, you would have no idea. You throw your kids down in the basement, right? And you have no idea that you're putting them in harm's way. And that, the, the graph that I had Jennifer pull up was one that I had clipped. And this is just Davis County. But if you go to the Utah Department of Environmental Quality, I mean, you can just put in Utah radon results. And it will pull this up for every single zip code in every county. So, you know, I'm looking at my brother's zip code. I'm looking at my mom's zip code. I'm trying to find out where they live and if they are in an area where there is high concentrations of radon. And then just for the record, because I like to give credit to journalists, what sparks my, my thought on this is that there was a March 1st article in the Salt Lake Tribune by Megan Banta, who highlighted this. I think February is usually National Radon Month. But she had this article in and I thought, oh, my gosh, this is a great opportunity to talk about lung cancer. So, there we go. That's, that's my thought for today. So tell your neighbors, test for radon.
Thank you for that thought. So, thank you, audience, for participation. If you'd all rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next on our agenda is the open session. This is an opportunity for anyone that's here to come up and to present what might be on your mind. Try to keep your comments to two to three minutes. And these are items that, that the council could consider and bring back to a later date. But we want to give people an opportunity to let us know what's going, all going on in the community and their minds. So just identify who you are and where you're from.
Okay. Can I go first?
Hi, my name's Mark D. Whitaker. And the last time I was here, I talked about a better type of road, the type of cement road rather than the asphalt road. Today, I'm just gonna tell you that I think that the Ford Motor Company is gonna come up with a better car. Now, right now, the best type of car is the electric car. And there are quite a few of them. I know that the Ford has come out with the F-150 electronic truck. However, I think in the future of the Ford Motor Company, they're gonna make what's known as a steam, electrical, and solar powered car. And it might be said, or at least it was rumored from the Ford Motor Company, this car, once it's made, would get a total of about 10,500 miles per the time that it takes for it to run out of energy. So I look forward to perhaps getting on with the Ford Motor Company. Otherwise, I'm gonna be a good school teacher. I'd like to teach, I believe, I mean, the math-free science at my former high school, and perhaps become the head football coach there. But as for this better car, I think it's a good idea. I think it'll be better than electronic car. I think better than a solar car. And the combination used thereof could get perhaps someday about 10,500 miles per the time it takes for the energy to run out. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Excellent. We go first. All right. I am out of here.
It's all right. Good evening, council. I am Bryce Peterson. I'm a former resident of Centerville and now a resident of Farmington. But I'm the past president of the Centerville-Farmington Rotary Club. If it's okay, I just want to hand out a little flyer. I'm here to just talk about a program that we've been able to get off the ground called Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. This is a program that will give any child, currently limited to Centerville and Farmington, because money is finite, a book every single month until their fifth birthday. These books, I have a longer presentation where I can go into like how the books are picked and whatever. You are not gonna find a controversial book in this list. This is just about trying to get kids to read and read better. These are picked by educators. And, yeah, you're not gonna find controversy here. So what am I asking for? Well, here's an example of some of the books. I want these back to these, you know, it costs me money. But if you guys want to take one, pass one along, just so you can see the example of the books. So Dolly Parton's Imagination Library was started in 95. Dolly Parton's dad was illiterate. She started this program in 95 to try to help the kids in her hometown in Tennessee learn how to read better. So people have better upcoming than her and her family. She's now giving away 260 million books worldwide. And if you look at, it's mainly in the United States, but she does have some other countries. But if you look at this, the map of this, the America and the coverage, Utah is glaringly blank. You need a local partner in order to do this. She has the infrastructure and for $2.60, we can, it's what it costs for us to mail a book to a child every month. And so 31 bucks a year for 12 books in a family's home, changes based on how old the kid is. So, you know, my two-year-old would be getting a different book than a five-year-old or a newborn. And I currently have been able to sign up only 22, we started this about six weeks ago. And I've got 22 children from Centerville enrolled. According to census estimates, we have 1,042 children in Centerville. So got a long way to go, right? And that's why I gave you guys the business cards. If there's any children under five, we want all of them signed up here in Centerville. I've been able to raise some money, but, you know, money runs out. And so I'm here to ask the council if this would be, I think this is a mission-critical goal to try to help support our, our schools. The ask that I would come to the council for is if you guys can help fund perhaps 50% of every child that comes and signs up. I'm not taking any money. In fact, you know, this, this obviously costs me money. I mean, every dollar that I get goes to buying the books. You can see the overhead online. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library is a charity navigator four-star organization, yada, yada, yada. I don't take any money. I paid for all the business cards myself. And, you know, we give money to this organization too. So, and, and that's it. I'm the only, like, overhead here in Davis County. I am trying to grow this, obviously. I'm gonna talk to Bountiful Rotary Clubs and I've got an appointment with the Kaysville Rotary Club. And hopefully after that point, we can, you know, take over the world. If there are questions, I'd love to take them, but I don't want to overstep my time. I would love to.
Can I have both of you's flyers?
Yeah, sure. Any questions?
There's no questions for Bryce. I just want the council to know that. I first met Bryce through the Centerville Rotary years ago. He's an active participant. Like you said, he's past president. And he and I met on this. And I said, yeah, come to open session and, and present. So he's just trying to do some good in the community and get things out there, whether we support it or individuals. But he is, he is a man on his own. And so I says, you're welcome to speak in open session and tell people about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bryce. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Bryce, just one question. Maybe when you say 50%, like, on average, for the council's benefit?
Yeah.
Put that, put a number to that.
Sure, sure. So, of course, it's, so.
Best, moderate, worst.
Yeah, right. So theoretically, if we enrolled every single child in Centerville, which Dolly Parton doesn't, she estimates that we would max out at 60%, and that it'd take us five years to get there. That number would be to fully fund that, $31 a year per child, $18,000 a year. Of course, if we're not, if we don't enroll the kids, they don't, that bill doesn't come. The way the financing works is, you know, like, I, I sent them a check for $5,000. That's gonna last a very long time, right? They're just pulling off that every month as we mail these books out. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So it would be a variable number, of course. And, you know, I, I don't know. I've never worked with city money before. I, I'm sure we could figure out a way to make that work, though, Mr. Summerhaze. I also need lots of help. You would be amazed. Fundraising is obviously a major problem. Like, that's a major effort of mine. But you would be amazed at how difficult it is to find these kids, right? Like, I, I mean, it really is work. So I really would appreciate all of you telling all your neighbors and whatnot. So, yeah. Oh, some of them are in Spanish, too. Like, their, two books a year will be English and Spanish, on the same page. So, and if they are primarily Spanish, that's an option, too.
Thanks, Bryce.
Say goodbye.
And thanks for bringing your family.
Yeah.
Nice to, nice to meet them. So, appreciate them at least. All right. Anybody else for the open session? If not, we'll move on from the open session. We'll go to item number one on our business items. This is a solid waste collection services agreement, contract extension on that. And which staff wants to take it? Nate, or Lisa, or Mike, or, I got three down here. One of you choose. Nate?
Me, me, my.
Nate's good, huh?
But you initiated it.
All eyes, all eyes came to me. So I guess I'll do it. So we contract with Ace Disposal for our garbage, green waste, and recycling collection. We originally signed, maybe not originally, but our current contract was signed in 2018. It was a five-year contract that allowed two extensions of, or two term extensions of two years each. So we are nearing the end of our first term extension. It expires in June. So we, our contract allows us to extend the current contract another two years, starting in July of this year. This con, this contract extension comes with a rate increase for the next year of 5%. And then another 5% increase in year two. I will note that there were no rate increases from 2018 during that first period of five years. Once we had that first term extension, we had a, I believe it was a 7.1% increase in year one and a 3.3% increase in year two. And then again, now this current one that's up for consideration is five in year one and then another five in year two. Staff recommends to approve this contract extension. After no further questions for me or staff, we do have a representative from Ace, Dawn Bagley. She's here. I would love to give her some time to, to speak with you all.
Is there a question for Nate right now? Yeah, let's hear it from him.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, council. We love servicing your city. And we do have a lot of people that live here. And Jenny, she's been one of your long drivers for a long, long time here. And we had to keep it a secret that we took her out and she's now dispatching. So we didn't let you guys know that she's not picking up the trash any longer, because so many people loved her so well, picking up the trash in your city. But you, your city is very, very important to us. And with the cost increase that Nate brought up and everything in that is just the trucks are just so much higher in their prices right now. And to keep the drivers and everybody happy at Ace Disposal, you guys all know that, you know, everybody wants a raise. And you have to pay really well to keep your people happy, to make sure they're picking up trash, because not everybody wants to be a trash truck driver. But I do love working for Ace Disposal. I've been talking trash for 25 years. And I really, really like it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No, I will state, though, that my garbage cans kept ending up in weird spots. My husband thought that the neighbor kids were attacking us. And I continue now, that doesn't make any sense. And actually, there was a wire that was low and the garbage man couldn't get under. And he was backing up, in fact, he got in trouble because he pulled through city hall and one of the policemen came after him, like, why are you pulling through city hall? In order to get our garbage cans. I've been so impressed, so impressed with the garbage people. I see them out picking up garbage off the road, standing up garbage cans. That I do have to say, I'm out in a bad lot. And I've been very impressed with your drivers. They're excellent.
And if I could say one more thing, we are actually having a recycling safety symposium. And it's gonna be on April 22nd on Earth Day. We'd love for you guys to attend. I would love to get the city and everybody involved. We actually service 19 cities now. We just picked up Woods Cross and that. But we'd really like to really, you know, talk about the sustainability, the recycling, and the safety within our community with all of our children and everything in that. I think this symposium is gonna just be really awesome. I'd really love for you guys to attend.
That was April 22nd?
22nd, Earth Day.
And this may be a question for you, Ann, Nate. It's a two-year extension. What are your typical contracts with other municipalities? And is there a reason why we aren't going to a three, four, five-year contract?
I would love to.
I know you would love to. I would love to get a different break on the increases if we did a longer term. Anyway, that, that's probably a question for staff.
No, actually Alpine, they actually extended with us. And that because we've just been, you know, one of the best trash haulers for them up in Alpine City and that. They actually extended eight years with two two-year extensions, because they're just, don't want another trash hauler in there, just because we take such great care of their residents. And they know. And that's one thing, I don't know if you guys have ever dealt with another trash hauler in that, you don't have me. I mean, Nate, Mark, Mike, they can call me anytime and I will solve that problem. I will contact the resident and everything in that. But it's one thing that Ace, it's really important for us to make sure we take care of the residents. We do not want the residents calling the city council or a mayor and that and complaining about us.
And when they do, if you call her, she sends them to their house to pick up the garbage. So.
I know. I was gonna say, we've been guilty of that. And you guys are so kind to come. And someone forgets to set it out. That would be me.
Well, the thing is, you know, a lot of us might sleep in or we forget when we're off to work and that and have somebody else put the trash out. You know, if you put it out late, call us. We're in your city four days a week. So, you know, why not?
How do I get a new blue can?
Well, give me your address.
I don't have a lid anymore. Nathan Rich hasn't helped me. The city hasn't, no, I'm just, I do need a new can.
Oh, dear.
I, I just bought a new can, a garbage can.
Hey, what's your address?
Could I go buy a new can? Is that, is that what I do? What's the councilman Summerhaze said?
No, because, well, mine was theoretically still functional. So.
So wait, we can't get this walked out?
And you did agree that it was functional?
A private matter. I was having, I was having fun with you.
I don't want any special treatment as a council member.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions for them?
To answer.
I just had the question for me.
Councilman Summerhaze, yeah. So our current contract allowed, was a five-year initial term and allowed two term extensions of two years.
Okay. So we're exercising the first option?
Second option, or the second term. So that's why we only looked at two years right now.
Are you in favor of trying to negotiate for a different one? Just because we have a contractual amendment, doesn't mean we can't negotiate for something different.
Absolutely. You're right. And I.
Except we, yeah, the, the comment back then was, you know, we need to go out to, to bid every decade or so. So it's nine years, I think, when we bid this. And also looking at the bid documents to see what the timeframe was. But if the council wants to go in that direction, we need to table this matter and talk further about.
Right. What you're saying, Lisa, is if we're gonna go to that time period, it's, it's a different discussion. It's a bid discussion as opposed to.
And I think.
Do we go five more years?
And, and that conversation, right? So we want two years to figure out what that looks like. But we've had conversations. We don't own the blue cans. But, you know, our conversations with them is we, they would like us to own our blue cans. So what does that look like? And do we need to buy blue cans? There might be an arrangement where we acquire. So anyway, there's conversations that we'd like to have the two years to figure out what that looks like after that going forward.
That's.
And that arrangement.
And we have with other cities. And we have with other cities in that, when they've wanted to have their blue cans, since we've been supplying them for so long, just to extend the contract, and that, then after that extension, the blue cans would be Centerville Cities. Anything else? But we love servicing your city, just wanna let you guys know.
All right, no other questions? Uh, I guess we have an amendment two in front of us.
I'll make a motion that we approve amendment number two to the solid waste, green waste, and recycling collection services agreement with Ace Disposal regarding contract extension and compensation for the next two years.
Second.
No, the motion is second, uh, Councilwoman Meekham.
Aye.
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 That passed unanimously. Okay, let's go to multi-jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Thank you. IT mutual aid agreement, uh, Lisa. Lisa Bednarz is here.
Hello, Mayor, and Council, and staff. Um, so, let's see. In twenty twenty-three, I, uh, Salt Lake City Police Department and, uh, Provo PD decided they wanted to make like a regional group of IT leaders, so that, you know, legislative changes comes, you see just changes come. We can all work together on how we're gonna implement changes instead of each department needing to, you know, reinvent the wheel. And so with that, they came up with this mutual aid agreement that would, in essence, if we had some sort of IT disaster, ransomware, or whatever, um, we'd get, possibly get, you know, IT staff from different cities to come in and help us, you know, recover from, from that. And, you know, it would be up to, you know, forty hours per city, and, you know, it's at their discretion, just as it would be with ours, if they have the staff to have someone come and help us. So, I think as a small city, this would be a great benefit for us, you know, 'cause they have larger IT departments that have more experience, and they're, and maybe bigger targets, and, you know, so I think this would be, um, I think it's necessary to do this. This group gets together, they share information, um, legislative updates, labor, training, you know, everything's kind of, it's a great cohesive unit.
Questions for Lisa?
Lisa, I am supportive of this, um, conceptually, but there was something in the staff report. It indicates the city will also need to pay an equal share of the costs and expenses of mutual training as and forth in the agreement. I could not see anything in the agreement that identified those costs and expenses. Can you point that out to me?
Let's see, so, I actually, Lisa Romney gave me some questions to follow up with, with, uh, the leaders of this. And, um, basically, it says, training opportunities will be made available, but participation is not required. There's no real obligation to, to us for doing anything, if I understand it. Is that what you understand, Lisa?
Yes, there's not an obligation, you know, you can decline if, if you think that we don't have the personnel or the services to respond, and there's also a thirty-day termination clause, so, um, there's some easy outs. And with Centerville being a small city, I think we would benefit from the other jurisdictions having, uh, more personnel and services.
They would have bigger training opportunities, and they wouldn't necessarily charge us for going, but there may be other things, conferences and things we might want to attend that we'd have to pay for.
Right, and, and again, I'm supportive of it conceptually, I'm just trying to understand what the cost to us would be. So, section ten of this agreement says that in addition to providing mutual aid in times of emergency, the parties also agree to utilize mutual training opportunities and exercises. The parties agree to equally share in the costs and expenses of such training, including rental space fees, guest lecture, instructor fees, equipment rental fees, and other training resources. And I just have no idea how much that's gonna cost, who's, who's, who's driving the boat.
And that made me nervous, because some of the other cities are bigger, but when they say mutual cost, are we only, are we paying a little cost, or, you know, are we paying?
A proportional cost, or are we paying?
And are we paying it, whether or not Lisa's able to attend?
And it didn't look like it was discretionary. That read to me like mandatory language, and so, and, and again, I'm not, not supportive of this. I just would like to know what the costs of that would be.
Hard to budget for, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and the, and the question I had is, it's a backdated agreement to January one, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, so it's quite prominent.
Correct, and so the question is, is, I assume that there have been no costs included to date?
There's no cost.
That there hasn't been any notification of it?
And what, and what other cities participate, right? Because again, like, if we have twenty cities, that cost is gonna be split twenty.
Exactly. So, I've got a list here of all the cities, Bountiful, us, Central Utah, nine oh one, Cottonwood Heights, Davis County, Draper, DuShane County, I mean, it's.
It's a big list.
Yeah, I mean, Farmington and West Bountiful and North Salt Lake aren't involved, but, um, 'cause they pretty much outsource everything, I guess. But, yeah, we have a huge list here.
I, I like it as well, but I do think it'd be helpful to know what the cost is, just so we.
For Lisa Romney, are you our go-between with whoever, who drafted this?
The, um, yeah, I just reviewed it, gave my comments to Lisa Bednarz. It's either Salt Lake City Police Department or Provo.
Okay.
Set that up, and they've got, a lot of cities are already on. In fact, we're kind of late to the game. But, you know, there's another part that we did, uh, submit our interest for this, so we don't have to do what's in part of, as far as having to, you know, ask all the other cities if we can join. We're still gonna be on them.
Now, one's mainly concerned is, obviously, Provo's a bigger city, but if we divide it twenty ways, 'cause there's twenty cities, Provo, I feel like should be paying more than Centerville, or Salt Lake should be paying more than Centerville.
It, it might be also. I, I would just be sort of curious to know, and, and again, I'm not opposed to this conceptually, but maybe just to ask them, hey, in the last year, how much have you guys incurred in training costs? And how have you split those out? Because if it's like a thousand bucks, okay, fine, that's not a problem. But if they're putting on, you know, fifty thousand dollar conferences and splitting it out, not very many ways.
It's a pro-rated based on population, or households.
For what I kind of, what I kind of gathered from the group is, you know, Salt Lake City may have four people that's involved in this group. We have one person, so I think it's gonna be like per person, but, you know, they've already had some training things, and a lot of people come in and talk to the group, you know, it's.
Well, that would be great, then, if they've already done it, then we should be able to get information about how.
We just don't have, they haven't, there's been no money, you know.
Who's paid for the training, Ben?
So, um, well, a lot of it's come down from the state, you know, um, and just, there's people at the state that wanna come and make sure the cities and counties are falling in line with all the changes and everything, so. And there really hasn't been any major, major training, so, but I, from what I gather, it's gonna be per person, not per city, as far as, you know, how it divides out. Like, we won't have to pay the same amount as Provo.
I would just want, for, for myself, before we signed off on this, I would just want clarification with regards to how much we anticipated that it was gonna cost the city. Like, I'm fully supportive of the idea that, that we should, um, support each other as cities if infrastructure goes down, right? I, I love that conceptually, but just for budgeting purposes, I, I don't wanna get stuck into an agreement. And Lisa, your point, I guess we could get out quickly if we needed to, 'cause there's a, we have a short trigger on it. So, maybe that, maybe that would alleviate some of my concern.
Sure.
You'd have to incur the cost that they billed you for that time, and then you get out.
For that time, and then you could get out.
Yeah, if you felt like that wasn't reasonable.
Right.
Yeah.
So, that's a great point, Councilwoman, uh, Hayman. Are there things that you'd like to see answered, council members? Besides that, or one of the Lisas, the answer for us, find out, or? That's what I'm hearing, right, that we'd like to have that tied down. Is there anything else, if she goes back, if?
I'm trying to think of a way that we could approve that subject, too, so that we don't have to bring it back.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Well, you could, yeah, table it, and we'll bring that information back, or you could approve it and direct staff to bring you that information, and then if you, if it's too much, we'll just do the thirty-day notice and say,
That's, that's what I would suggest.
Turns out we didn't like the cost estimates.
Yeah.
Uh, if we wanted to terminate, we'd be able to.
Yes.
I think there is little likelihood that in the next sixty days, they're gonna put on a big training session that we haven't seen, so, and I'm okay with that.
Boo.
Yeah, and given that.
We only meet quarterly.
Yeah.
Given that some cities had already entered into this, any changes that we wanted to make would require an amendment?
That was, that's where I was gonna go next.
So, I gave my comments, like, hey, these would be my comments, but understanding that this is the deal, that's the way we had to present it.
I was peering at Lisa's long list, it looks like it's at least forty entities on, or so. So, I don't know that we have.
Not a big standing on that.
You have a pretty, they have a pretty strong position to say, uh, yeah, this is the formula.
Yeah. Yeah, they kind of, I think they went through it and hashed things out amongst the main cities, and has to work out the details.
Would you like me to make a motion?
You betcha.
I move that we, uh, enter into, that we approve the multi-jurisdiction IT mutual aid agreement, um, as presented in the staff packet, with direction to staff, that they, um, come back to us with more information about training costs under section ten.
Second.
Motion is second, uh, let's vote, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Summer Hayes.
Aye.
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 Great, all right, let's go. Item number three, thank you, Lisa, appreciate it. Let's go to item number three, concession facilities use agreement. This one kind of intrigues me, it's kind of fun, so Haley's gonna tell us all about it. Come on up, Haley. We've been looking for a solution to this for a while.
Yeah, for sure, yep. Um, so, with us kind of losing money year over year in concessions, we thought, let's try to get somebody in here to provide a service, um, but not kind of take the loss. So, I reached out to U Conference, um, and under that umbrella is Vumont Tackle Football. So, they run already, um, concessions at our park during their football games. So, we already have like a very good working relationship with them. Um, asked if they were interested, they could, took it to their board, um, and they would love to be involved. Kind of how they're able to be successful is labor cost. They're using it as a fundraiser, so they bring in players to volunteer and, and run that for them. Do you guys have questions?
Instead of losing money, it's just zero.
Yeah, so we just are charging, and I didn't really wanna dig into, oh, we're gonna take a percentage of yourselves, 'cause it's a fundraiser, so we're just trying to kind of cover a little bit of water and utilities with that fifty dollar per week rental fee.
I know that some of the concerns expressed by Samia, that during our baseball season, last year, we didn't have any concessions going.
Correct, yeah, it was just closed off.
So, you're concerned about that, uh?
They had a lot of concessions last year.
We were losing, if I remember, what, six to eleven thousand a year or something?
Uh, yeah, this.
Three to seven.
Three to seven, okay, three to seven.
This school year, twenty-two, we, we lost ten, and twenty-three, we ended up losing thirteen.
Oh, we did lose some money.
You know, as a council, I'd estimate a high, so.
Great job, man.
Three to seven.
Well, I'm thinking about our upcoming budget, 'cause what the loss was gonna be is three to seven.
Correct, yes, in our current, projected budget, yeah, for sure.
So, uh, yeah, like, uh, she says, we're not making money out of it, we're charging a fifty dollar per week, so. It's, it, it was a solution, you know, so.
I love it, thank you, 'cause like I said, I had a lot of people that were not happy they showed up down there with their kids and absolutely nothing to feed them in a game at five o'clock, and they were there for two or three games, and.
Yeah, we'd love something provided there.
Yeah, I think it'd be great, thank you.
Is this something that we could then replicate in the fall? Because the term of this is through June thirty.
Yeah.
So, is the thought, hey, if this is successful, we can just.
Yeah, we just figured, let's just kind of.
Is it test drive?
Assess after the season, yeah.
They're not obligated to provide concessions, we're just giving them the opportunity to do it. So, if they decided to halfway through the year pull out, we would have no recourse, it's just, they would pay us the fifty bucks a week.
Yeah, so they're obligated to the dates in that contract right now, so they're saying, yes, we're gonna provide it these Tuesdays through Thursdays for this season for spring. So, they are on board and obligated, and will staff and run it. If for something, unforeseen thing comes up, they do have to communicate with us in writing twenty-four hours in advance.
Well, to be clear, it says that they're permitted to use the concession facilities. It doesn't say that they're obligated to use the concession facilities.
That's true, yeah.
Just in the event that they decided that they didn't want to do it, 'cause it wasn't enough of a moneymaker. I mean, we couldn't require them to provide those services under this contract.
Yeah.
But if they bought the stuff to, to stock it, they're pretty, we're pretty lucky.
Yeah, I think it's unlikely, I'm just saying. I don't want people coming back and saying, you guys didn't fix the problem. And we're like, no, we gave the opportunity, but we didn't contractually box them in to have to do it.
Our intention is to be there each week.
Yeah, I assumed.
Oh, we have representatives here, wonderful.
We didn't know.
I thought we just had guests that really wanted to stay a long time tonight.
We're substitutes tonight, and so we're kind of a late, late person.
We're from the board.
We, we help run a restaurant, and so as far as, uh, food safety and that, we'll keep that, uh, yeah.
I just wish I had a boy still playing, I'd love to have you get him out there working in the concession stand.
So, this is Jenny and Mike Nilson, and they're on the board.
So, if you have questions, we are happy to answer them.
It's helping to fund a lot of kids who can't pay for themselves.
If you can just come up to the microphone.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm sorry.
I'm sure we could hear you, but.
We should've said something.
Yeah, speak loud.
It, it really goes to help a lot of those, uh, kids that cannot fund it themselves, and so they can't play in the league, and so.
We, we've offered scholarships, like, but the tuition has had to go up, the U Conference had to raise it. So, we do one fundraiser a year, usually, at the beginning of the year, that him and I do together, and it's a ton of work. But we have a lot of families that have multiple, multiple kids that play, and it's very expensive, and they can't afford it. But we wanna give every opportunity for every kid that wants to play to play. And this is just helping us that much more. So, when Stephanie presented it to all of us, we were all for sure on board, and him and I will be doing the brunt of the work. So, we were like, absolutely, if we can give families an opportunity. So, we did send out an email to all of the parents, and we had an overwhelming response of people that said, this would really help our family out this year. So, we're just grateful for the opportunity that you guys are giving us to be able to do this for many families in our community.
So, to my question, i- is, if this is for youth football, how, what will you do in the fall? 'Cause those kids that would be volunteering in the concession in the springtime would, in theory, be playing in the fall. Did you not anticipate doing it in the fall, or would it be different?
We, we run, because, uh, we do, our football season is in the fall. It runs from like end of July through end of October typically, depending on how far we go in the championship rounds. But, um, we do run our concessions then, and we use all of that money to just help with the cost of our equipment, and also scholarships, like we said.
So, potentially, we'll see the same thing come back to us for a fall agreement?
Yeah, I, because the fall, we do rent it, like, we do pay the fee to use the concessions, that we run it during our games. So, I, I'm just curious, are you asking for the fall for baseball as well?
I'm just wondering if you're going to be providing, or, I'm not obligating. I'm just wondering what your vision is for past the spring, or is your vision that you would be doing this in the fall?
Well, kind of like what she said, is we're gonna see how it goes, because we know, like, sometimes getting into things, and we've learned in our business, like, people get all excited, and then they start doing it and realize how much work it is, and they go, never mind, like, and so, we're just gonna kind of assess how it goes. But by the response, we're not too worried that we can't find plenty of people to fill the spots, so.
And just so you know, we have not been providing any concessions at all during the fall for baseball, because it is, um, a lesser busy season, we have less teams. So, that's something we haven't provided in the past.
Mayor, Council, I do wanna share, I've shared this example, it worked really well in E from, we allowed the Lions Club to utilize the facilities, and they would bring in different groups. They'd bring in cheerleaders, drill team, the mountain bike team, and they'd have a really great, different groups coming in and using it. So, I think this is a great model. I didn't necessarily mention this with Haley, but the fifty dollars a week, it's entirely up to you. I mean, what I did down there is just one dollar, just to create that contractual agreement. I mean, how many weeks are we talking about?
Like, eight.
So, you're talking about four hundred dollars, and I, I think that's a, a small donation you can make to the youth football. Just again, see how it goes, and if the utilities are crazy amount, and they wanna keep doing it, let's have that separate conversation later. But I think we're, we're not losing ten to thirteen thousand, we're losing maybe five hundred to a thousand to, and a good cost.
Theoretically, helping scholarship opportunity, that we've talked a lot about in the past.
So, I just, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I think that's an opportunity just to, um, we can reduce that.
I, I'm supportive of that, I love that. I, I love the, I love what you guys are doing. I, I especially love that you are providing an opportunity that kids can be involved in creating their own ability to. I, I'm supportive of that, I, I love the, I love what you guys are doing, I, I especially love that you are providing an opportunity that kids can be involved in creating their own ability to pay, instead of just expecting someone to donate it, like, so I'm really supportive of saying, let's make the contractual agreement with a dollar.
Let's see if Lisa doesn't like that, is dollar okay?
Whatever we need, but-
Well, I, I bet Lisa will say that it sets a dangerous precedent.
Yeah, and, and staff hasn't had an opportunity to respond, but, uh, yes, so it is a donation, and there are some provisions in state law, I'm having public hearings, but, um, I don't know, I don't know how much it costs us to rent it to them, so is it a fair market rental? Is it close to a fair market rental at one dollar?
The question is, we've done an RFP, and they've given people an opportunity to respond, and this is the only response we have, so we're gonna debate this publicly now.
Oh, we did?
Well, the RFP is what we had originally, but this is the-
Centerville's rentals are as nice and as generous leash, leases as they're-
Already, they already are.
Bountiful City comes over, in fact, Bountiful Little League comes over to Centerville because of that.
Because Bountiful's too expensive, so-
But, but we appreciate it, for sure.
The dollar, we don't want to turn down, but at the same time, we are logical, we are logical about that, for sure.
We don't want to turn that down, but yes.
So what I'm saying is, this is just a temporary, and we've done an RFP, we've had, we had potentially one response, and that fell through, and so here we are, kind of scrambling, but we've, we've gone out for an RFP.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
If we've gone out for an RFP-
Not this, not this particular time, but we did it last year.
Well, we could also say, it's not necess, it's not a donation, it's, they're providing a service-
They are providing service, that we otherwise lose money.
And so that we won't go, um, in the hole for another year.
Correct, I mean, this is the debate that Lisa and I have in private.
That makes sense.
Right now, it's public. It's fun.
So yes, in that case, if it's not a donation, then it's, it's just services.
Services, and you got the dollar for the contractual.
Up to you.
What, what did we say about Bountiful?
Bountiful Little Leagues, they actually use the Centerville field as well as a home field, they will come over because it's so much cheaper than what Bountiful will charge.
And we know what Farmington charges too, it's outrageous, so, we already know we're, we live in a great city, so, we already know.
So we, we really appreciate, yes, that's exactly right.
Rather than making them pay a buck a week, which seems-
Oh, no, it's just one dollar for the entire time.
Oh, I was gonna say, like, why don't we just say ten bucks total and call it good to go?
What's up to you?
Like, one flat fee.
No, do one fee, just, just to create that.
Because I just, I'm just gonna tell you, every dollar goes back to the kids.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, none of us take anything, this is total free time to just help them.
That's where I kind of like the idea of trying to be a little bit supportive, because I do know that there are adults that are involved that will be volunteering a ton of time.
Us and the Jensen's will be there.
Yeah.
We, we hesitated at first, we knew how much time it would take, but then we see the kids and how much joy football, especially the kids that we scholarshiped, I, I just, we want any opportunity for those boys to play, because they love it, so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the concession facilities use agreement with U Conference Incorporated for use of concession facilities at Community Park, as set forth in the staff report, with the revision that it'll be a flat fee of one dollar for the proposed, um, term.
Second.
Most of the second, uh, let's vote, Councilwoman Hayman, you're all right.
Aye.
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 Woo, thank you, you guys are awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You guys weren't too controversial, doing-
I didn't know what to joke with.
Bad idea, thanks for bringing it up.
Gina's smile, I would say.
All righty, thanks. All right, uh, let's go to bid award, uh, we have a bid award on the four hundred East First South, the Page's Lane, ADA, uh, pad ramp replacements, Kevin, you finally get your opportunity.
This is the topic I came for.
You dressed to impress.
That's right.
Hey, we didn't make you stay until, how long were you here last time?
Ten thirty.
Not as funny.
Ten thirty for a year.
That's true, that's true. I'm overdressed for this, uh, bid award, but this project is basically in anticipation of the four hundred East Street reconstruction from First South to Page's Lane. Uh, we were very excited about the bids that we received, the number of bids, as well as the, um, you know, the, the low bidder number, we were, I think the engineers asked to go four hundred thousand, we did receive some bids around the four hundred thousand mark, but, um, we followed up with Albertson's, some of their, uh, references, they typically, they do a lot of work for Morgan Asphalt, uh, they're usually a subcontractor, but where this is pretty specific work, and it's only pad ramp replacement, they bid it as the prime contractor. So that's our, our recommendation, is that the project be awarded to Albertson's Concrete and Construction.
Have you checked on references with them, or have we done work with them in the past?
We've checked on references, uh, they've have a few really good references, uh, the main one that we, we've worked with Morgan Asphalt quite a bit, who uses them.
Yeah.
So yes, we, we've checked on references, and we, we actually went to one of their projects and looked at their work.
We need better engineer estimates. I'm just kidding.
Hey, that, he did that on purpose, he did that on purpose so we'd feel good, you know, I mean, now we feel good about how it came in.
No, the estimates are four oh three.
We beat Arrow Construction, okay.
Well, the last bid was really goo, what I'm, what I'm actually saying is, it's good to see the competitiveness and rates coming down.
I was going to say, so we were in a staff meeting on Monday, we talked about a project that our company just bid, and we had seven, ten bidders, seven that were very competitive, and the lows were within hundreds of dollars on a multi-million dollar project, so.
That's crazy, that's awesome, so we're seeing that too.
It's good to see, at least the commercial market being very competitive.
Yeah.
But Kevin, I have a question on the actual pad things we're putting in the sidewalks, do we know what they are, I'm telling you, that one over there by the junior high, the little nubs are all breaking off, and if there's a slick spot on the sidewalk, that's it. But I'd sure like to see them go, now, in a hospital, they have some that are like brick, so, you know, they're more of a concrete, that I've noticed are not, those, they, they're little tiny nubs, and then the water gets in there, and then it freezes, it holds all that water in there, and then all the little nubs break off, because it's frozen all winter, and I walk on it.
Is the one on Main Street, is it a yellow insert?
It's the yellow insert.
Okay, that's our city standard, maybe UDOT used that because they were in Centerville, uh, we would need to kind of readdress and take a look at our city standard. I do know that those, uh, the pavers, the brick pavers are a little bit more work, a little bit more expensive to install, but that's a conversation I, that we'd have to have if we wanted to change our city standard detail.
And that seems to be quite as, uh, replicated city standard detail where I've seen.
Yeah, we pull that typically from, uh, APWA Utah, so you might see, Farmington might have a different color of insert, or there is a UDOT standard for those brick pavers. Uh, UDOT has several different standards, we just have one, we tried to pick one.
Does UDOT have this different standard based off of the application, location?
Uh, they've got, I'd have to take a look at that, but it might depend on which city they're in, and they're trying to match the city's, uh, standard.
It's okay, I just thought I'd throw that out there, so everybody's aware, it's very slick.
We ought to take a look at those and see if there, if there's other places that the same thing has happened.
I think just as a point to answer Robin's question, would, assuming that this, a bid award gets done, uh, completed tonight, you may just want to ask these guys and say, hey, if the spec had been different, what would have been your cost? Just so that the council might know that for the fu, for future reference.
Well, I think it'd be interesting to have the city guys-
Send it out in the weekly update or whatever else.
Go around and look, I mean, if they're all breaking like that one is over there, they're not gonna last very long, so we're not really spending our money in a great way, you know, it hasn't been there that long.
Yeah, that's a good point, maybe we ought to have Mark take an inventory of the pad ramps, or-
How, how they're, how they're lasting.
And see, you know, how long they're lasting, if we ought to take a look at that, uh, it's a big plastic.
That would be one of my suggestions, I'm not trying to trade, change this contract, I'm just saying, I just guess I want to make you guys aware that maybe there's a little bit of a problem, and maybe we should be looking at it.
Definitely, yeah, if they're not lasting, that's, that's a, that's an issue.
When you work the corner, you know these things.
So can I make a motion?
Yes.
You bet, let's go.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid award for the four hundred East First South to Page's Lane, ADA pad ramp replacement project to Albertson's Concrete and Construction for two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred dollars.
Second.
Most of the second, any further discussion? Let's start, uh, Councilwoman Hurst with your vote.
Aye.
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 Vote passed unanimously, thank you. Hey, Kevin, uh, okay, let's go to minutes review and approval, February fourth work session, February fourth city council, February eighteenth work session, and February eighteenth city council. Uh, I see some of you are browsing through your minutes, do you have any changes to them, or is there a motion to approve?
Well, move that we approve all of them, I'll second that.
We have a motion, uh, I'm sorry, we have a motion in the second, uh, on favor, aye?
Aye.
Passed, that passed unanimously, okay, let's go to appointments, uh, Matt Larson's term was up on planning commission, and he'd served us diligently in planning commission for three years, he also served us diligently on the landmarks committee for many years. Um, he's had other things that he'd like to get on to, but, so we appreciate his service, but I've asked Gary Woodrow to come from, uh, the, the tree board up to the planning commission, and he has accepted, so looking for, uh, a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Passed, thank you, all right, uh, council report this, uh, week is Councilmember Robin Miekom.
So, on the U, the utopia, I don't really have much to report, there, our numbers dropped a little tiny bit, but just a fraction, um, there, there's not really much change or going on that I know they're doing right now.
Okay, anybody have anything else pressing? Thank you, Councilman Miekom, may report, I'm gonna get staff to help me out today, because we haven't come, and they wanted to help out, first, I'm gonna have Haley Turner come up, and as, as she walks up, uh, we had our own youth council day on the hill, and unfortunately, I wasn't with them the whole time, because I had a doctor's appointment, but Haley and Bryce, uh, amply took it, and, uh, they had a great time, I joined with, uh, with them at lunchtime. But, uh, I was impressed that the youth had put together and planned it, and it was kind of unique, so tell us, uh, some of the highlights of what they did.
Yeah, definitely, um, so it was, um, yeah, completely youth council planned, I turned it over to our youth mayor and, um, a few of her, um, helpers for the day, and they attended some committee meetings in the morning, that's kind of the first thing they did, so they got to see that process of bills going into committees, um, they sat on the daylight savings committee, um, as well as an education committee, and then we went to, um, from there, we went and had a, met with, uh, Representative Cutler, um, who kind of gave us a tour, and his intern kind of gave us a backstage tour into the basement, um, to see, you know, the, the foundation of the Capitol and all of that, um, as well as we got to sit a little bit in the gallery of the house and watch some things there, and then we met with the, um, treasury. So we, uh, yeah, through their own connections, they completely planned everything, um, and we were just along for the ride, so they got to, like, reach out to different members there at the Capitol to kind of plan their day, it was super, super beneficial for everyone involved, um, and they, in true youth council style, were in their, uh, pink polos, and they internally called themselves the Pink Polo Club. But we got compliments throughout the day, they were very noticeable, um, throughout the Capitol, so it was very fun to, to see them out there representing the youth for Centerville.
And, uh, they stood out, for sure, not only their pink poles, but, uh, uh, what great kids they were as well, too. I think it's wonderful we've done the last couple, three years, uh, in, um, having our own day on the hill like that, so, thank you for you and Bryce for your efforts. All right, next, uh, people are gonna help me is, uh, Mike Carlson and Dave Walker, while they're coming up, and what I want you guys to think about is one great point that will benefit our city, that you learned at your, uh, public works meeting in St. George last week, so while they're coming up, I joined with them, I was in St. George last week, uh, uh, to meet with some clients, and also to try and catch up with them, and they got me over to casino night, uh, I didn't lose my chips, because I'm all, gave them all to Dave, but, but, uh, but I was able to have dinner with these two fine gentlemen, and also Steve Hunt, and, um, uh, Mike introduced me to a lot of great people, but, uh, I, Mike sent me on my phone some great sessions, and, uh, it looked like there was some great sessions that take place, so either one of you, or both of you have any input on something that you, you learned down there that could, could do a bit, help Centerville?
One that I thought was interesting is probably, if I go back all the years that I've gone to rural water, I, I look back, and I see how the technology changes, and it's like, interesting, as well, they have exhibitors where you can go around and see new products and stuff, and it was just, I was reflecting back to, you know, when I started back in probably nineteen eighty-eight, and seeing what technology was then and what it is now, and it's just, it's surprising to me that how much we involve, you know, we can make a repair clamp, and how many times can we remake a repair clamp to make it better, and the answer is, the last one that dated is pretty interesting, I, I love it, and, uh, so it's good for us to go, it's good for our staff to be there, I, I kind of get saddened by a little bit, is they, they put us with these vendors, and, uh, they don't give us a lot of time to visit with them all, I mean, this, this room, I don't know, what would you say, how many vendors?
I think they had a couple hundred different vendors.
I mean, it's crazy, and it was interesting, probably in nineteen ninety-five-ish or so, I decided I wasn't gonna go to class, yeah, I know, bad thing, right, right, I decided I wasn't gonna go to class, but what I did was I went around, and I would go up to the salesman, and I'd look at a, a part, whatever I didn't understand, and I go, tell me how that works. And it's interesting, when I have one-on-one time with them, I learn so much, so I, I never get mad at my staff if they go, they're hanging out around a vendor, asking about, you know, something about how it works, because that one conference, I'd probably learned more than I had in a long time, just by asking, how does that work, tell me, and I don't understand it, tell me again how that works, and it's really interesting, but rural water does a great job, I started going, there was approximately around two hundred people that would be going to this conference, this year, they said it was close to nineteen hundred people. So that conference center, we fill it, and it's amazing, they keep trying to find a nook and cranny to make more room or get more vendors in, and so it's a great conference, you know, you can pick your variety of staff, uh, presentations from very basic all the way up to advanced stuff, I sat in a lot of legislation classes, trying to learn things, grant classes, so I have a variety of stuff there for everybody, so it's a great conference, I feel like it's dollars well spent, education is really good there, they, uh, are integrating a new deal where now they scan you in and out of each class, so they know how much you've been in the class, so you can't go hook you as much, they said they reported to my boss, but, kind of hope he doesn't see what mine looks like this time, no, I'm just kidding, but, but no, I, I think they're trying, continually trying to make improvements, they are, we're, they go for CEUs, and that's kind of the reason why they're tracking CEUs, is to make sure that there are people that, they come, they go down, and then they go do other things, but whatever. But I'm proud of my staff, my staff has always been good about attending every session, and, uh, being there from the beginning to the end of the day, and I appreciate that, I've never had the right range on it, Dave can add whatever, I'm sorry, I probably ran over, but-
And Dave's son was with us at dinner as well, too.
Yeah, that was awesome, too, uh, because my son works in the same industry, so I'm able to share some of that knowledge and some of those experiences with him, so, he was with us, so I had all that free time by myself, but, uh, so, no, he's wonderful, but, um, yeah, to echo, a lot of the vendor information I think is very valuable, they have a lot of presenters, the great thing about the conferences, a lot of presenters are the hands-on workers, so you're gonna have the operators, you're gonna have the engineers that are designing the things, it's not always just some random teacher that kind of knows, or is just reading a slide for you, it's a guy giving you real-world application. Um, we also did have Daniel, uh, one of our operators, our newer guys, he ventured out and took the exam, so we're hoping that he was successful in that, he put a lot of effort into his studies ahead of time, and so we'll also keep you posted as we find out the results, and, uh, we have- And we have just a couple others that'll be working towards doing that same thing very soon. But, yeah, I agree. I think it's a great conference. I think there's a lot to be had. There's a lot of institutional knowledge from these vendors that are down there that, they're dealing with one thing, so they can just funnel all this information into you. It's really quite interesting and quite fascinating. And I won a little bit, but I don't know how to gamble, so it was all luck on a twofer on roulette.
I'd throw it out for any questions that you may have. I know the city spends quite a little bit of money to send us down there, and do you have questions for me on that? Anything that you'd like to know more about the conference?
I think this conference personally, if I knew more about public works and Rural Water and everything, it'd be even better. But two years ago, I went and attended a couple sessions, and I kept bugging Mike, "What are they talking about?" So, I think he didn't get a lot out of it because he's the mayor, having answered so many of your questions. But, so, boom, over my head. So, hopefully, it's not over you guys, I said. But I was impressed when you were sending me the agenda of what you were on and talking dinner with you and Steve from the classes you'd been to on water billing and that sort of thing as well, too. But, so, this is one of your better ones you go to, isn't it?
It is, and I'd maybe add one more thing in there. It's kind of crucial for us to keep up with, you know, what rules and regulations are we going to have to apply with? And it goes back to one that, in my earlier years, I was sitting next to this older gentleman, and they were showing the rules as they were coming down, and he says, "Yeah, I can handle that one." And I'm going, "Okay, great, happy for you." And he kept going on and on. He got to the lead copper rule, which we're in full force on right now. And he says, "You see that one?" And I go, "Yeah." He says, "I'll be gone by that one." And so, I mean, he was counting rules and regulations to when he was going to be gone. But it's nice because the state comes in, and they teach us what it is that we need to do. And from there, we can come back, and we can set up how we're going to do the sampling plan. How are we going to navigate through these rules and regulation that's going to take place? And, you know, there for a while, I mean, we have new standards coming out right now. We're getting ready to gear up for U.S., UMCR?
ECR.
ECR, whatever. Six, and, you know, we're finishing up five, but six is coming. And so, we've got to navigate on how we're going to do this one. What's it going to affect? There'll be a whole list of chemicals that they'll go after again. And, you know, we keep dodging the bullet from the chemicals in our wells, I think, because we have pretty good water, and it's based right at the hills. But, you know, there could come a time when we don't navigate through it. We've got to figure out what kind of treatment process. So, it's good that we keep on top of those. Centerville's always been ahead of the game on these things. We turn our samples in early, and we would have plenty of time to take and be able to adjust whatever if we have to. So, anyhow, that's our plug. Tomorrow's story, we're going to stick to it, so...
Thanks, you two. Appreciate it.
I appreciate that you guys coordinated plaid shirts.
He got me.
You guys are looking pretty coordinated.
I said, "Go lumberjack today."
Well, the next thing is, there was a grand opening for snow grows, one of our newer businesses in the area. And Chief's not here. I know he was there, Chief. And I don't know if Lieutenant Barnes could, went on to report on that or not, if he knows anything about it, but...
I was there with Chief at the same time.
You were there. Awesome.
I went Thursday night and Saturday night.
And I have to call, because...
We tried to go Saturday. It was...
Because I...
Went about 10 o'clock at night.
I changed the flight to get back for the ribbon cutting at 1:00 on Saturday, but they moved it to 5:30 Thursday. So, I'm glad that you were able to make it, so...
I was able to talk to Richard on Thursday night and Lindsay on Saturday night. Thanked them.
Yeah, and I thanked them as well, too, sent them emails. I went by to get some ice cream at 10 o'clock Friday night when I flew in, and it was packed coming out the door.
We hit it luckily just at the right time.
And it was like out the door.
Yeah.
I know. I went last night, and it was still really busy. But they said they dipped 4,000 cones over the weekend.
Yeah, they ran out of cones on Thursday night.
Oh, my gosh, that's...
And the waffle cones are amazing. Amazing.
Good to know.
Yeah.
We have a new pretzel place coming in, apparently, too.
So, yeah, with that said, staff, you should probably know, some of us received an email today about Wetzel wanting to do a grand opening on Friday or Saturday, and I need to respond back to them. But I don't know if you guys have heard about it, have you? So, it looks like the email, they kind of picked and chose where it went to. So, but the three of us, it looks like. So, anyway, should I, I'll send that over to Bryce or something, should I, and then you, Brent? And see what we can do, and they wanted to do one on Friday or Saturday morning, just before they opened at 10 o'clock.
What is their location, Mayor?
They're in Walmart.
Oh, inside?
Yeah.
So, anyway, so we have some new businesses. And so, next thing is March 17th, we start the first round of interviews for Wasatch Integrated Waste Management for the executive director position with Nathan retiring on June 30th. So, I will keep you updated on what happens there. The last thing, I want Mike Eggit to come up, and I want Lisa to help, and I want my voting members of Brent and Gina to help me between now and Friday if there's anything that we need to be ganging up on our four members of our House and Senate delegation, so...
I know what I'm mostly worried about.
Tell us.
I'm worried about Senate Bill 337.
Yep.
Very much so. I think that it's an overreach of government authority and land use decision-making.
Back up for those of us who don't know what 377 is.
Is this the general plan?
No, this is a new one that just hit last Wednesday.
Yeah, this is a brand new one.
Do whatever the heck you want, get economic development.
Yep. The governor had...
I heard about this one.
The governor had an epiphany during the Christmas break. It grew in his mind how to come to terms with a program. He found a senator, basically, to sponsor the bill, Senator Colmore. And the league had an emergency meeting Thursday morning, which they've never done, in response to this bill hitting the docket. And bottom line, what it is, is it's a desire to usurp local authority on land use development for legacy projects that benefit the state of Utah. And so, they can cross city boundaries. There is a substitution looking at getting the city to, basically, I don't know what the right word was. Not consent, I guess it is consent, right, is what they're...
Kind of partnership?
Oh, yeah, maybe that's a better word, trying to pursue, but it's still not very good language because the question came up, if the city doesn't consent to participate, can the governor still move forward how they want to? And so, they're creating this new economic development group called Beehive Economic Development Corporation, and moving away from the UEOC, Unified Economic Development Committee Commission, is being disabled. It's very problematic.
Where the league actually has a membership on the board, but we won't have a membership on that.
Yeah, this will only be a five-member board of only government delegates. Basically, it's like the governor, governor's office representation, I think senate representative...
And how are they trying to define, like, beneficial use?
Well, here's the worst part. It gets even worse. Then it's set up like an RDA, but the governmental entity overseeing this Beehive Economic Organization retains 75% of the taxable revenue that comes out of the area for the area to develop.
Yeah.
Over a period of 15 years.
And there's no limit to the size, so it could be a five-acre or a 300-acre development.
So, inland, another...
It's inland port authorities.
Exactly, yeah.
The Salt Lake City and County are fighting against, obviously, they're expressing their frustrations.
Salt Lake Council is big against it. Did you agree with Mayor Stack's comments, hey, we already have RDAs?
Yeah.
We can negotiate with...
Yeah, he said there was already the tool.
There's like five or six different tools.
I mean, I thought you're so on, man. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, why do we need this? And if the GOEO really...
Is there speculation that there's something driving this specific?
There is some commentary that the governor has...
Well, it's good a Fortune 50 company.
Yeah, he wants to, and he wants to be at the cutting edge of technology, and, yeah, cutting edge technology, that Utah is going to pave the way. And I get a feeling from even other meetings with WFRC that he's trying to grow him just towards the Olympics, so we have all these new technology opportunities and vertiports and all kinds of things readily available. So, when the Olympics comes in 2034, we're ready for it. And so, he's pushing all these initiatives now to build to that. That's what...
But like, he has GO, we have GOED, right?
Well, we have GOED, it's GOEO now, but yes.
Yeah, but we have agencies that already do that, don't we?
EDC Utah is another one.
And we should perhaps bring up, if this was really important, why wasn't there any partnerships developed with the actual cities and towns and the league and...
Even MIDA, I've worked with MIDA in Riverdale. We were a MIDA city. And MIDA was a huge, they wanted, they wanted public services assistance in the form of fire and police, but then you got nothing back from them.
Yeah.
And then your system's connected, and you get nothing back from them. It's crazy.
It is, my opinion is, it's not good policy. You don't develop good policy in the last week of the session. I'm really bugged that they...
Yeah, take it, take it to interim.
But it may, it may go through anyway. This is, like, they're concerned this may be one of those bills that gets passed.
This is the governor's darling is kind of how it sounded like and how...
Yeah, okay, it's the governor's darling, but what's most, but it didn't come up until the last week of that length. It, there's no, I don't think there's any support from, I mean, the league was just saying, how do you want us to proceed?
Legislative representative from the Senate.
Yes, I'm worried that there may be...
There's already a representative sponsor ready if it gets off the Senate floor to the representative house, that it...
Which sponsor?
It's Colmore.
Colmore is the senator.
Who's your rep?
I can't remember who they said in the meeting is the representative. They did say their name, but it was quick because we were having a lot of dialogue.
The, I think the concern is that they may not care that the league is opposing it.
That's what I got a feeling, too.
And so, the league was asking how to proceed, you know, they just tried to negotiate the best they can, but it's, I...
Yeah, and why did it hit, like, like you said, Councilmember, and why did it hit a week before the end of the session? It feels strategic, frankly.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
337?
Yeah.
Plenty of land down there next to Fairview for this development to occur.
Yeah, by his hometown.
Sorry.
It's very concerning. I mean, there's probably other...
Other voting, voting members, Lisa, Mike, any others that we wanted to inform them on that...
The good news on the general plan one, real quick, they removed the general plan by ordinance language. There were some amendments to some of the RDA area tools that were still amended in, but that was removed. So, that representative did listen and struck that, so that's good. Some, there's a little bit in there about mail-by-ballots. You might want to look at that one. They're still tinkering with that one, or voting by mail, is what I meant. And then one that was brought up was one about fees. I remember that, that...
That's been since the start of the session.
Yeah, and it was, and we were all on board, and then last minute, there's been a substitution that's changed it, and now it's put the league into an opposition position. We got an alert of that this morning.
Transportation, yeah, exactly.
Oh, we're back to that? Senate Bill 310?
Bill 310.
Yeah.
Yep. We're now back to oppose because now they're putting the exemption in act for religious organizations.
So, ultimately, with the transportation, then what does it end, right? Thinking about our drainage utility fee? They now get exempted for that. There, it's a fee that should be applied across...
I think that is a really interesting take because they are utilizing, they're getting the benefit of the service. I was really surprised that they're trying to get that in there.
Yeah, I'm doubling up. There's two transportation bills.
Religious organizations are exempt.
Yeah.
It's not like anybody's trying to make money off of a nonprofit, just trying to pay for what they're using.
Yeah, just the burden.
Yeah, I cannot be in more disagreement with that. Who is driving that?
Brammer.
Well, that's what it hears, it sounds like.
Who is?
Brammer is the legislator.
And Peterson is the other one.
So, they are having conversations with the church, the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Saints, to work with them because they're drafting the bill at this point. That's what's really frustrating about it.
That's what it sounds like, yeah.
This is what we're okay with. Put this in and put that in.
We're against it with that aspect, this week.
With that substitute back in, it's...
And I know Gina, when she sat by me, we both were against it, right?
Oh, yeah, that was appalling. I was not happy.
Yeah.
I tried to be a team player, but that one was, that's egregious.
Again, we're seeing a lot of, which we continue to see, but more and more erosion of local government rights by these decision-making policies. Those are ones I can remember, but maybe there's others that you can at least remember.
Those were the two that I was going to bring up, the two real big ones. Missing any others? Have to, so keep an eye out. Session ends Friday, right?
There was a police department one, Lieutenant Barnes.
Oh, yeah, that one was getting some opposition.
Are you following the legislation, the bill? I can't remember what, what was it called?
Yeah, they were, what was that one?
I'm looking at the bill track. I don't have my notes.
We know if Representative Cutler's...
That's one that's unconstitutional.
Cutler is on the board or the commission over the Tuft.
No, I'm talking about, did the cannabis...
Cannabis one?
Oh, I think, well, I know it cleared one of them. I think it cleared representative. I can't remember if it cleared.
I still know it happened last Friday.
It cleared in the Senate to go to the main floor, but I don't know if it's been voted on.
That's what I remember. One of the bodies has a...
Yeah. Yeah, Robin made a comment, well, it's made a comment during that meeting. Doug Shipley, oh, that's right, Doug Shipley.
And that does seem like it would be, it is going to favorably move forward, but I guess we won't know till the end.
Yeah.
All right, one, two, thank you, five, for helping me out.
Yeah, no problem.
So, I have included everybody other than Nate, but Nate, you got a chance to talk for a while tonight. All right, so that's my minutes reporting. Further questions for me? All right, city manager report, Brent.
Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor. The one of them was the flag display amendments, which was challenging, where the state gets to decide what flags you can and cannot have in your government buildings. So, we oppose that one, but that's, that's one of the unconstitutional ones, that we kind of talked about. Nope, I want to control.
It'll be great for some lawyers. Well, it's job security.
Council, you like that?
There was some...
No idea why they're going there with that.
There was some talk about the code red, so there's amendments happening there, increasing the temperature for code reds when those occur. So, though, I think we've gotten to a point where neutral, I don't, can't remember exactly where we are on that, but... Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few things. Spring cleanup. So, one of the items that we're experiencing this year, of course, is that usually we try to do this during the spring break, but our spring break is when our parking lot will be essentially getting worked on this year. So, the alternative, which I think is a great alternative, is April 5th through the 12th, which, again, pushes a little bit later. Sometimes we've had spring cleanup when it's still, snow is still falling. So, April 5th to the 12th, and holding it at Smoot Park. We felt Smoot Park was a pretty good location when we had the windstorm in 2020, so we think that'll be a good location for this year and April 5th through 12th, and doesn't interfere with baseball. Any serious concerns with that this year, so we can get it posted?
It allows people to do spring cleanup during their kid's fall break, put them to work in their yards.
Their spring break, yeah.
Yeah.
So, then we'll start getting that posted and advertised wherever we can. We do have some general plan survey questions that Chris and Mike have developed. So, what I'm thinking about doing, Mayor, I haven't talked to you about this yet. I'd like to send that email out to each of you council members, and if you could reply back to the mayor and myself with your thoughts on those questions, then we'll kind of go from there, and maybe we'll need to have a come-together conversation. But first, I want you to review them, but just make sure you send those responses back to the mayor and myself, so we don't... Okay, so we do have some changes. So, is that okay if we go that direction right now? Mayor, are you okay with that?
You bet.
When are you, when are you thinking you're going to send the email, and when do you need the comments back, so we can be timely?
Mike?
As soon as I get the notification forwarded to Miami to push out and season mail on it, I think I would get it across next year, too.
So, just for the record.
And when do you want it back after that?
Just texting us when that comes, just so we can get right on it?
Soon as they're mailed, so we can get them mailed out. He has already mailed it.
Like, one day, two days, three days?
Mike, if you're going to keep chatting, I need you up here.
I mean, Gina's made a good point, like, if we're given a due date, that will be helpful.
That'll be helpful to get you quick response, and also, I know you're trying to get them mailed out so we can keep...
I guess, I don't know a good number. I'm thinking something like three days or five days from the date you receive it would be great. And I'll work on getting it to you as soon as possible, as soon as I get that turned out. I had a good conversation with them today. I saw the mailer. It looks really good. It has QR code and also internet links. So, whether someone knows how to use a QR code, or they want to enter the link, it'll have both options. It's pretty direct and obvious what it is.
Identifier, so you don't get duplicates.
Yeah, and they don't have any of that. Yeah. And they don't have any of that. They're not doing that.
Oh, as far as that, that will be, you'll see that on the survey.
Okay.
They can identify how, how they relate and they can state where they live if they want to, and then they can state who they are. It has, you'll see it.
It still is a hand, but I think what you're asking is.
I want to know that there is a unique.
Look, well, all I can say is look at the survey and give me feedback and we'll talk to Chris about the solution on it.
And I'm hoping that all we have to do is require a name in the field.
And that is, that is on there. And, and it can be required mandatory. Look at, so look at the survey and then provide comments.
And an address because then you can tie that to property ownership.
I, I think that would be smart. By the way, sorry, not to, but just along those lines, I met with a group in a home a couple of weeks ago and they were at, some of, some of the concerns were, and the impetus for this meeting was to talk about the general plan. And one of the questions I received was what was the response rate, which I believe Chris told us was 4.7% when he was here.
That's right. Yeah.
And there was somebody there that does a lot of surveying for a career and a living and said, what a great response rate that was. So I know that seems low, but that was promising to me that he was saying, well, actually that's pretty good for, for that kind of a survey. So.
Sad, but the statistics are that that's a high response rate.
I'm just saying, as we, as we've been concerned about whether or not we were getting enough responses, I, that was just, I know Chris was feeling fine about it, but I was, I, I don't think this gentleman was here at the meeting when Chris talked about that. And he just was a kind of a second opinion that that may be.
Well, I'm hopeful. I mean.
Expect, he said, he said a lot of times it's more like 2%.
Hopeful, I'm hopeful seeing the flyer today that it will grab attention and gain more interest in the house. It looks pretty casual. It uses our city coloration and logos and stuff, so it looks very official. So I'm hopeful.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Well, I'll send that out. I'll send you a text when I've sent the email. But you can just respond to the mayor and myself. So we're not creating a discussion, front of discussion.
That's fine.
The next item, Bryce sent you a passion plea to attend league conferences this year. I thought that was a fun email. So Jennifer has asked me to remind you, if you can attend the league this year, she needs to know as soon as possible to register and book hotels and all that. So if you can make it, please, please go. It's a fun party. I'll be down there. The city manager meeting is the couple of days beforehand as well. So I'll be there all week.
That's April?
16th to the 18th.
Bryce sent us something?
Yeah, I sent an email, encouraged you and saying.
It was a while ago.
It's all, it's all from, didn't you send us one?
I sent one.
Yeah. Bryce sent a fun one, just talking about how the benefits are, all the fun you get to have in St. George. He had a 10 points. Jennifer sent the more official.
I've noticed one.
Okay. Drainage rate increase. So we had a great discussion during work session. So I, I think my proposal now, and you let me know if you want to do it. I just schedule a follow-up meeting, agenda item for our next city council meeting to, to both talk about kind of where you want to go with the audit, but also go through drainage rate analysis and just have that discussion. I know we've talked about having an open house, but ultimately I feel if we have this conversation, again, the drainage rate and talking about and having it potentially on during the regular meeting, so it's on YouTube, that it'll inform all the residents and we can point them to that discussion. So we'll have a presentation from Kevin and go through that process as well. Any issues, concerns with that? And then, oh, drainage. So our drainage rate increase is effective March 26th, which means that people will see it on their bill April, May 1st. So the question is, are we okay still keeping it the March 26th timeline right now? Or are you wanting us to consider delaying it once again?
This is just going to be that 50% increase that goes into effect. We're not talking about any of the retroactive.
Nope. That's just our 50% increase, the effective date. If we have this discussion, the second meeting of, of this month, I think it's again, still ample notice. It goes into effect March 26th, but you don't see it on your bill until May 1st. I just need to know if we need to prepare another, or if Lisa needs to prepare another resolution.
How, how far do you have it, Tim? How far down the road do we want to kick the can? I mean, we're already losing money that we desperately need.
I, I, I don't think I am of the opinion we need to put it off any longer. I think we ought to.
We're already putting off projects because we don't have.
Yeah.
Well, let's, we'll delay this conversation.
That's the problem.
Until the next meeting where you can have a chance to hear the presentation and then you can.
That's fair.
Okay.
Okay. Now, last item, I, I am attending these today, Wednesday and Thursday. I'm in Taylorsville with Emergency Management. It's shared, Science of Disaster, which is fascinating, understanding how disasters are created, how they happen. And of course, from an emergency management standpoint, how can we help mitigate those? I think by far one of the most interesting of the emergency management series. So, but if you need me, give me a call, but FEMA doesn't like me missing time. So if you need me, just text me and I'll call you during a break and things like that. Pretty fascinating.
I have to tell you, one of the things watching all the L.A. wildfires made me really think about, because I've always thought, oh, we have Firebreak Road. We're going to be fine. Whoa. We get really strong winds coming through that canyon. And if there's fire in the right, I mean, it could be very, very bad for our city. So I hope that we are taking.
That's what was scary on our last fire.
Yeah, that was the issue.
In the parking lot, it was.
I, I brought that up last fire board meeting and the fire chief says, we've been so fortunate. Like the gun range fire where we lost two houses. I mean, that fire came within 50 yards of our houses in Centerville and the wind, the wind direction changed.
Right.
So California, Utah.
I went up there and sat with residents for three hours and they told me about it, you know?
California, Utah, one and two, with our wildland urban interface. So.
And insurers have stopped renewing policies as of reported today in Southern Utah.
So yeah, there was some of the conversations.
Kianta out past Ivans.
Oh, really?
That's some of the legislation happening.
Fire, but they're saying we're not going to renew the policy.
That's some of the conversation happening at the state. I'm not quite sure where that legislation is. We'll, we'll have to ask the fire chief of doing these assessments and then your fees, you'd be having this different assessment based on where you live. And if you choose to live there, then you should bear that cost. And not quite sure where that is.
Kind of like pricing life insurance.
Well, my understanding, there's less insurance providers for homes on the hill in Downfold than there used to be, isn't there?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
So it's really good for me to go through this emergency management training with our, our police department. We, we really have a good sense. You know, the, the difference for us, it was just kind of fascinating, is a lot of cities, the incident commander tends to be the fire chief. But we're in this unique situation. We're part of a district. And so emergency management falls a lot on the police department. So which is a little different, but I, we have a great staff and we're going to kind of go through this process of defining what our roles are in emergency management. Chief Child did it all, right? He was the emergency manager, but he was on the, out in the field and he also helped keep council informed. So he's created this unrealistic, impractical approach to emergency management when the emergency manager should be in the E O C getting the information from chief, who's boots on the ground, who's out in the field and, and myself not being, you know, supporting elected officials and, and our relationships with, with NGOs and things like that. So we kind of really need to redefine what our roles are. And that's what we're kind of working on. And so, anyway. So more to come on that one. Our E O P currently, I'm the incident commander. So good luck to you all.
Get some good training.
But that, but you know, we delegate a lot to the police department, but technically I'm the incident commander in our organization. So I do feel compelled to make sure I understand it. So, so Mayor, that's all I have, I think. Yes, that's all I have.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Can I, can I harass Brent about one thing?
Oh.
More we can harass than Brent the best.
Ah, geez.
So I printed, I printed this agenda and we have all these staff reports. Do you see something on these that maybe needs modification?
Our logo?
Yes. Where's our like whole new logo going on all our stuff?
I blame Jennifer.
Blame Civic Plus.
Yes, we blame Civic Plus, software, lockdown software.
I'm just saying, we have this awesome new logo and we're still using the old logo on all these.
Oh, that's great. I'm glad you're paying attention. Yeah, for sure. We'll work on that.
We're working on it.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Yeah, okay.
It was good natured harassment.
That's great. I'll take that.
Not aware of cold session matter, correct? All right. Is there anything else? Most adjourned.
So moved.